Good afternoon. It is Friday, March 1st, 2019. The time is 4:00 p.m. We are at the Veterans Memorial Hall, 209 Sur Street, Morro Bay, California. This is a special meeting, community forum, for our city goals and objectives. I'd like Councilmember Addus to lead us in the pledge, if you would.
You can do the pledge.
... To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, welcome to our community. We've had multiple inputs, and our staff will be talking about that with regard to our strategic planning process. We've had opportunities with our new polling system, which, again, our city manager will elaborate on for us, as well as the opportunity to send emails directly to either council or to staff, or to find us at your favorite coffee shop and grab us and get ahold of us and tell us what you think. And so, this is a session not to specifically design the objectives for the year. If you look at the staff report, we're here to really take public comment, listen to the community, and then discuss and formulate our ideas about our goals. I think it's stated very well on page six of the agenda, and I won't steal Mr. Collins' thunder, but I do want to call to your attention that staff is recommending that council direct staff to bring back a summary of public input shared through the survey, which I just spoke of, the city advisory boards, which we have information here, and this forum as well. The summary would group input from the online survey, as well as -- that gauges the community opinion, as well as the input that occurs here, and the priorities that are related to the existing goals, as well as the opportunity for council to refine and prioritize those goals. And those will be adopted at a future council meeting. And so, we have no action items today. We're here to listen to our community, to have some discussion. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins. Welcome also, Mr. Olson. Great to have you back as well. Mr. Collins, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Scott Collins, City Manager, and I'll be brief. In my presentation, this is really about hearing from the community and giving council an opportunity to deliberate on what they've heard from the various inputs. So, real quick, we'll go through the agenda for this afternoon. There are copies of this PowerPoint presentation in back, but ultimately, what we're going to do is do a quick review of the goals process writ large, give you an update on the 2018 Goals and Objectives and Work Plan that was adopted by council last year. Garrett will lead us, lead council and staff and the community in a public comment session, and then we'll review public input that's been received by the various methods that the mayor outlined, and then give up an opportunity for city council to deliberate and provide direction, and then we'll summarize the next steps. So, the strategic framework, for those who may not be familiar, was established several years ago, probably around 2015, to really create an integrated strategic planning process that sets at the high level what the goals are for the community, ultimately, what we exist to do as a city, and then work down to the objective levels, those things that you can measure, and then create work plans that help achieve all of those things, and connect it directly to your budget process. It's a natural flow. A lot of cities and organizations have used this framework, and it's been tinkered with a few times. The first shot out of the gate, 10 goals were created and about 87 objectives, which became a bit overwhelming for a city of our size, very ambitious, always good to aim high, but maybe a bit unrealistic, and council has, since that time, shaved them down to about five goals, and last year adopted 32 objectives. And so, I'll give you a quick review of what those goals are and the action items that came out of those. So, getting to that, your goals are, at least as they exist currently, number one, and in no priority order, but just the first one listed is to achieve economic and financial sustainability. Really, that's around just the long-term sustainability of the city, and how we play a role in that, and how we play a role in our overall economy. The next goal is the wastewater, a water reclamation facility project and one water plan. You know, a lot of discussion has been going on on that. A lot of work has been put forward on that to really help bring our wastewater system up to par with the current regulations, and also help establish a new source of water to protect us against droughts. And the one water plan is around really integrating all of the various water sewer and stormwater systems to ensure that we have long-term sustainability on our capital project front. The next goal is improving our overall infrastructure outside of the water and sewer system, and enhancing the cleanliness and presentability of our public spaces. I don't think I need to speak to that, other than, you know, we do have a deficit in terms of our ability to keep up with our infrastructure needs, both the maintenance of what we have and projecting into the future the needs of our future residents. The fourth goal is around our city land use plans. We've been involved in that process in one form or another for many years, to update our general plan, local coastal program, and zoning ordinances, and that's really to help create a simpler approach to how we do planning, making sure our various plans actually align with one another and don't have disparate sections, which makes it virtually impossible for folks to interpret, makes it harder on staff, makes it harder on council. And the last goal that was brought in to play last year was really enhancing our engagement and communication with the community. So, those are high-level goals. Last year, council, as I mentioned, adopted 30-plus action items to help achieve those goals, and we provided regular updates to council throughout the year. And council, at the end of last year, made the commitment to include engagement in the strategic framework process. I think it was, you know, just assumed it would occur, but I think council wanted to spell out the various methods by which we would garner community input and engagement in this very important process. Now, I'll go through the items, the 30 items, and really quickly, they're here for council and the community to peruse. Really, it's just to demonstrate that the city has taken a lot of action in this past year, a lot of work on finances, a lot of work on the wastewater project, economic development front. The second page includes projects or action items that we've either completed or have made significant progress on, you know, offshore wind opportunity, the Community Choice Energy Program, tourism, you know, marijuana, just, you know, general plan, local coastal program. There's a lot of things that we've done to help achieve those overall goals. And then, we have items that, when you go to the next slide, that require more time, that we put on the list, and we knew it was still ambitious, but there are things that are still ongoing, like the aquarium, enhancing revenues, looking at our lease management policy for waterfront leases, the homeless issues, and the like. So, there's still work to be done on those, and there are other items that council intentionally put a pause on last year, such as the Market Street Plaza and Centennial Plaza Project, potential partnership opportunities with the power plant site and the old elementary school, considering tax measures for street improvement, infrastructure improvement, what we should do with the wastewater treatment plant, the existing site, should the Wharf project be completed, and that needs to be demoed, and what do we do in the future? And also, code enforcement for issues that aren't life and safety and health, you know, how do we enforce those? Those items were intentionally put on pause, understanding that we wouldn't be able to get to those. So, those are items that council didn't outright delete, but maybe you might want to consider as we move forward in this process. So, I'm happy to answer any questions on those items. I know there's a lot there. We can always take those questions later, but this just gives an overall context of the work that's been done, and also an understanding that you don't want to put too many things in front of you, because it becomes hard to stay focused on, you know, 40, 50 things at once. So, this --
Scott, can you adjust that?
Sorry. This is one of the projects probably we put on the list.
(laughter)
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, fast forward to where we are today. The council added that new element to the strategic framework policy around community outreach, and the city staff has responded by engaging a new online survey tool, Pollco, to help folks who maybe can't make a meeting or don't want to attend, to provide their input, to encourage folks to reach out to council members directly or to send emails. So, that's been going from January to February, and probably all told have heard from about 100 residents or more. We're hosting the community forum today as another venue to provide input. And then, moving forward after this meeting, we envision that council would prioritize, based on what they've heard through all the inputs, and develop an action plan for '19 and '20, sometime in late March, early April, ahead of the budget discussions, which began in earnest late April, early May, before we adopt the budget in June for next year. So, with that, I would like to introduce our special guest here today, Garrett Olson, who helped facilitate this discussion last year. And as most of you know, Garrett, at the time he helped us last year was the fire chief for the city of Slow. He came back to California in 2012 as the deputy fire chief, and quickly promoted to chief in 2013, and really helped set a new vision and new course for the city of Slow Fire, implemented the city's first strategic plan for fire, brought online new technology, apparatus enhancements, really modernized the departments, and really making sure that they connected directly with their community, as that was an area of need. He retired late last year to pursue other opportunities to really continue on public service and engage with communities that are seeking to create sustainable pass-forward and sustainable plans for the future. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Garrett, and thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council, staff, and engaged residents. It really is an honor to be back here with my friends in Morro Bay, in helping you set your keel deep in the water for setting the goals and objectives moving forward. You know, there's already been a tremendous amount of work, and this community is to be commended for the degree of public outreach, which I think continues to accelerate with each and every year. There's been some amazing work that's already happened prior to this evening with regard to the engagement of your community, and I'm going to highlight those real quickly and apply the context to where prior engagement fits in with tonight, and then we'll talk about what our next steps are. And soon, we'll be getting to public comment and opportunity for residents, again, to provide you with their hopes and dreams for this community moving forward. Last time we were here together, we talked about increasing public engagement, and I'm thrilled to follow up and find out that you've already embraced that and moved forward with Pollco, which is a tool that allows your residents to be able to provide you feedback when it's convenient to them, because when it's convenient for you to listen, it's not always convenient for people to be here, and Pollco is a huge move forward. And the results of that Pollco online opportunity for feedback is included in the staff report, and based on council guidance, when we get to the end tonight, will also be included in subsequent opportunities for the community to weigh in and help establish their priorities that will come back to you in a future meeting. We'll get to that when we talk about next steps. We've also, through staff, engaged our advisory bodies and commissions to allow them an opportunity to look down the road and help identify major objectives that they feel are relevant to this community over the next two-year timeframe. That also is included in the staff report, and will help inform subsequent public engagement and council deliberation. And then, council members, you've had an opportunity at coffee shops and via email to be engaged with your community, and this is a wonderful community for that type of engagement and thoughtful connection. And so, this evening will be an opportunity, we'll hear from the residents first, and then we'll bring it back to council for you to have an opportunity for inquiry, if a member of the community brings forward something that you would like more information for discussion, and then discovery on what ideas you have that will inform the next two years, or what you've heard from your constituents that they have asked you to represent here this evening. So, a lot has already gone into this evening, and this is our opportunity now, we'll be transitioning, to give the floor to our residents to come and talk about their hopes and dreams. And to revisit what the mayor and city manager have already said really well, you have an amazing plan that has a four-year cycle for identifying the major goals and objectives for this community, and we're mid-cycle on that. This is an opportunity for us to fine-tune the goals, but this isn't our clear-the-board, fresh canvas, reestablish the goals. This is really an opportunity to find out what objectives fit under those goals. However, not everything is predictable on a four-year timeframe, and when you established your goals two years ago, nobody here had a crystal ball. And so, while we would appreciate the engaged residents' opportunity to come in and talk about their hopes and dreams for this community, we don't want to constrain those hopes and dreams and ideas to fall under one of the city goals. So, we invite people to come up and talk about what their hopes are for this community, irrespective of the goals that are established, and trust that staff will be here, and I'll be working with the city manager, to make sure that we capture those, and for those items that fit within existing city goals, we'll help nestle those where they belong, and for those things that are perhaps outliers but are still important to this community, we'll capture those as well moving forward. So, with that, that's kind of an overview of our process. The community will have an opportunity to address you. You can ask questions during that process. There'll also be time afterwards for your deliberation and inquiry. Are we on the same page?
It appears like we are.
Excellent. So, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to the community, and I believe one of the first people that's going to talk is Mr. Don Maruska. Is that correct?
Yeah, the mayor.
Okay. We'll let you guide how people come before you. We just have one citizen that has a presentation.
Sounds good. And so, we're going to open public comment a little differently this evening. We're going to try not to cut you off, but not to allow you to go too long. So, I don't know if that's not really -- that's kind of the opposite, isn't it? But we do want to hear from you and allow you to come up, and so, there is a five-minute timer. We'll try to abide by that, but also respect you and your input. And so, with that, it sounds like, Don, did you want to come up first with public comment? I'd welcome you, and then -- and you don't have to fill out slips if you don't want to. This is an open forum meeting where we just want to hear from you. So, Don, welcome.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm pleased to meet you today. Actually, I'm celebrating my 25th year of having my --
Your mic? There you go.
I'm Don Maruska, and I'm celebrating my 25th year of having a business office here in Morro Bay, from which I provide coaching and consulting, actually, to local governments throughout the country. And I always think about Morro Bay and compare it with other places, and it always strikes me, and I share with my colleagues elsewhere, that Morro Bay is a city that's always punching above its weight. You are taking on, you know, major, major challenges, and you're doing it, you know, with heroic effort, and with very limited resources. And what I want to talk with you about is a suggestion of elevating to a major city goal, a key engine and the fuel to provide you the capabilities to execute on more of these objectives and to do so successfully. What this is, I'm phrasing it here, is a way for you to remember it, as targeted actions for progress, how to get things moving, and how to get things moving in a productive and successful way. So, why is this needed? The critical reason it's needed is that the city needs additional revenue sources. Your city manager and others, and you all know, and I think the community is well aware, that we're not currently generating the level of revenues to sustain the infrastructure and services that residents and visitors want. Higher value tourism and greater business performance is, from my quick assessment of your financial situation, your key lever to get the engine moving and the fuel going to support your other objectives. You've done a lot over the last couple of years in, you know, cranking down on your fiscal policies and your efficiencies and everything else internally, and frankly, you have very few places to go now, other than raising fees to residents, which is never popular, and other things that would extract things from the residents to try to help support. The business and tourism area has an opportunity to bring revenues in and to bring those resources from others, other people's money, as they call it. And so, that's a key opportunity. And what I've noted in being here for 25 years, I love Morro Bay. I don't want it to be on Newport Beach by any means, shape, or form. I love its character and don't wish its character to change dramatically. But we are getting a little long in the tooth with the condition of our business districts, the level of amenities that we're offering to visitors, that's keeping this area of Morro Bay at a reduced level compared to other areas in the county that have fewer attractions. They don't have a rock, they don't have the otters, they don't have all sorts of other things, but yet they're punching higher on their tourism and on their business activity. So, this creates an opportunity. This is potential for us to meet more community needs by figuring out how to engage that business potential more effectively. That's what I want to talk about. The Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce provided me some details of the last five years. The business community and tourism provided about $26 million over the five years. What I'm just offering to you is, think about, hey, if we could just bump up that level of business activity and tourism, the value of that, not necessarily more people, but people providing higher rates of stay while still keeping a diversity of choices in our community for places to people stay, if we could just bump that up 20%, that would be $5 million. That's like over $1 million a year. So, this seems to me to be your biggest leverage point, and why, thinking about what could be helpful here in the community and help us have the place we want and the future we want, I think it's a key opportunity for you. So, the question is, what's needed? How do we make that happen? And what do we need to do? And that's a situation where there's a critical opportunity here. The key theme of this is public-private collaboration. It's going to take both, because frankly, you know, I think we've got to inspire some of our hoteliers and some of our business people that they could do better, and that the city's behind them to help do better. But we also need those folks to put something on the table to match that. There's no giveaway. So, what I'm proposing to you is that you think about a city goal, actually elevating it to a goal level. You've got the fiscal sustainability and everything else as a goal. That was where you were trying to do it internally. Now, you need to look at an engine to accomplish it more broadly. So, this would be to create targeted actions for progress, to create near-term improvements that would help make the community more attractive to people that would want to upgrade their businesses, people who would want to upgrade their hotels, and make this more successful. It would have several key objectives. One is to tap insights. Whoops.
I'll give you a minute. How's that?
Okay. That'll be just fine. This is the last slide. So, one is to tap insights, as you already have from your strategic plan, and from the 4MB, the four business districts, and to look at what have been best practices elsewhere in turning around these situations. The second is to tap initiative for motivated businesses, to turn to the businesses and hoteliers that want to move forward, and to find ways to encourage them. And that would be to tap investment to accelerate these actions. So, I'm proposing a tap, a targeted actions for progress opportunity fund, where the city would allocate over two years, $400,000, that might be $100,000 initially in each of the four business districts, to be targeted with matching dollars and effort from those businesses and hoteliers, to combine, figure out ways that you can achieve a better performance from your business sector, to support what our community needs to accomplish and to serve its residents.
Great, Don. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Do we have a copy of that as well? Or could we get a copy of that presentation?
I can most certainly provide it.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? If you're comfortable stating your name, do so. If not, not a problem.
My name is Rigmore. I'm a resident of Morro Bay.
Hi, Rigmore.
I write anything down, so this is going to be a little weird, but anyway. I am all for a big, nice convention center, and I've talked about that before, but my daughter was just up there from Arizona, where they had a medical convention, and usually when she speaks at them, I go with her, but she didn't this time. So, I asked her, why aren't you getting to Morro Bay? And I had asked her before, many years ago, and she says, well, she talked to a coordinator about that. And it wasn't like I had said, maybe the airport isn't close enough. No, that was fine. Restaurants and motels maybe not be enough, depending on how they have other guests, but she said the coordinators, they would love it. But the vet's hall and the community center, not enough space. They have to have way bigger rooms. They would love Morro Bay. Going to restaurants is fine. Having a hotel a little away is fine. Getting to the airport is fine. And they would love, on the breaks, to run along the coast, to go shopping in this little town. And I think I've gone to a few of those, and I tell you, these people spend money like there's no tomorrow. Of course, I'm a cheapskate, so it all looks big for me. But anyway, my daughter was here over the weekend, and she was down visiting those otters every morning, every afternoon, next day, back in the morning, every afternoon. So, if you're just going to make big money because you're going to make view sheds for the cars or other dumb things, well, then I'm not for making big money, but I think Morro Bay would be a beautiful place to come on a convention. Thank you.
Thank you, Rigmore. Appreciate it. Again, if you feel comfortable stating your name, do so. If not, not a problem.
Good evening. My name's Ken McMillan.
Hi, Ken.
I'm both a property owner and a business owner in town. In order to make this within the timeframe, I'm going to read this. Many of you are aware that approximately two years ago, I was put in a situation where I needed to vacate the property on Market Street to make way for the new Market Street Plaza project. And what I'm doing here is I'm going to kind of give you a different perspective from what Don was talking about. I'm going to show it from the side of the business side. So, I had three choices: relocate somewhere outside Morro Bay, close the business entirely, or find another location within the city. During that exploratory phase, I was approached by many people, including city elected officials and staff, residents, and other business owners about the need for a nice nighttime business on the upper end of Morro Bay Boulevard. In the evening, that area was a black hole, and there was very little tourist or visitor-serving businesses up there. So, my family decided to pursue the property at 5:30 Morro Bay Boulevard. We bought the property and basically demolished everything from the inside out. We modernized it, sprinkler systems, all-new electrical wiring, plumbing, low-energy lighting, and I'm not Amazon or Google, so we didn't ask for any breaks from the city. We asked for nothing, even though this development area was very important to the city, because at least that's what I was led to believe, that it was a key area. They wanted to develop that upper end. Now, we're there. We're open. We're happy. What is missing so far is all the skin in this has been mined, okay? And what I'm saying at this stage is the city needs to take this opportunity, start to capitalize on what we have done, in this case, what we did up with that property, and take it in the right direction to go along with the long-term plan for development within the city. The Amazons and the Googles of the world are not just looking for huge tax breaks. They're also looking for the skin in the game from the public sector, from the local government. That may be in many forms. That may be just getting the bureaucracy out of the way so they can do what they're going to do. It may be tax breaks. It could also be seed money. Seed money being to change, to help with the environment, such as on Morro Bay Boulevard Seed money being to change, to help with the environment such as a Morro Bay Boulevard, maybe the trees, which we've discussed many times, getting them all trimmed, putting lighting. So there's many different ways of doing this. And I think at this stage, what will, what I would say as a business owner who's done this, I'm not a developer, but I certainly spent money like a developer making that building what it is. In that case, I'd like to see where the city thought it was important enough also by tapping, using the tap, as Don Maruska was talking about, the, some seed money, just get some things rolling. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Public comment is open. It's community input time, folks. If you feel comfortable stating your name, if not, not a problem. Welcome.
Thank you. Meredith Bates, Morro Bay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, staff. Couple of things I was thinking about, reading this document, it's talking about the heap funding for homeless programs. And I'm really hoping that can happen, where there will be this grant that's available, I believe through the state of California, for homeless services. And it would be fabulous if we could have a warming center in Morro Bay. They have warming centers several places in the county. The one I'm most familiar with is in Los Osos, and it's fabulous for when it's pouring rain or when it's below 34 degrees, some of our folks that do not have a place to live can get shelter for the evening. And I'm really hopeful that this will be considered and go forward. Another one of my thoughts are about, is, are about public art, and I know that's a consideration and would be great to have more murals, more opportunities for artists to create beautiful things in our public purview. I noticed that there's something called the mural mile in Morro Bay, where supposedly you can take a tour of 23 murals. I don't know where they all are, but maybe I'll look for them one of these days. But it could be a great opportunity, tourist attraction. Hey, there's a corner on my street. I would love to see a mural placed. One other concern I have is about the first speaker, and this is nothing personal to you, Don. I've known Don for many years, but I just didn't feel warm and fuzzy welcoming when the first speaker had a professional presentation and talked really fast. And I just, I was like, hey, I thought this was a community kind of friendly thing, and it didn't, because of that presentation, it didn't feel quite as friendly as I would have liked it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Appreciate it. Public comment is open. Welcome, Mike.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Mike Manchak, I'm with the Economic Vitality Corporation. Let me say that I'm, it's been wonderful working with the chamber, with the city, and with the community leaders like Don and others. And I think that as much as communities don't often change much, and I think Morro Bay is probably, you know, is very protective of its community and its, its feel, its ecosystem, if you will, I think that we're likely to see change, more change here than you're probably ever going to see in the next, you know, in the last 50 years. And, and I think that there's outs and external forces that might create that to happen. I think whether it's the finances of most cities, whether it's the finances of the county, any potential recession coming up. I think, I think also, I think it's a positive thing that I think people are finally discovering more of Morro Bay, right? People from afar, people that I know that live in faraway places are, have discovered it and are seeing it for what it's worth and the amazing place that it is. That said, I do think also that I'm very supportive of what the chamber is doing. I think what the city is proposing, the city manager, Scott, I think has come up with some really solid proposals. And I think it's something that, as an economic development organization, again, we're all about balance and about helping the community. We can work with and in concert with the chamber and all its goals and objectives. Having spoken with Don, and I've known Don for a long, long time, I think what he's proposing is very solid. I think we have to invest in our community. We have to show the world that we're investing in our community. And I think frankly, and let me end with this, that I think the time is now. It's, I've often said that in the past, I have others, but I do believe now is really the time to do it. I think there are people that would look to provide more resources for the community. And I think let's do that before things like a recession or other things start to, again, slow us down for another half a decade. Let's do that and, and do it without much hesitation. And I thank you very much for all that you do and the sacrifices you make. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Public comment is open. Feel comfortable stating your name, do so. If not, not a problem.
Good evening. Thank you all, Lynda Merrill, and thank you for this workshop. I think it should help everybody get an idea of what's going on in our city. It seems extensive that all of, everything that you all do. And I've read the report, the staff report, and I appreciate all the detail that's gone into this. It's really an extensive report, and I think that you tried to give us an overview of what the heck's going on here, and I'm really pleased with that. Also, I want to thank you for this wonderful heat. I brought two coats, and I don't even think I'm going to have to put my second coat on tonight. So thank you, Scott, for hearing us. You didn't do it, who did it? Oh, Rob, did you do that? Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda.
Have a good evening.
Appreciate it. It's awfully hot up here, but we're sacrificing for you. I'm just telling you.
We really don't care.
Why don't you speak the truth this time? Come on forward, public comment is open. Feel comfortable stating your name, if not, not a problem.
Carolyn Brinkman, Morro Bay resident. Good evening, everyone.
Welcome, Carolyn.
I'm a little confused. I did not know that we would be getting input, giving our input just through public comment. So I thought that would be more of a workshop. So if this is a bit ragged, I, I really apologize. I'm hoping that we will be able to continue to respond through Polco and, and through emails to the council and to the city manager and other people. You look out there and there aren't a lot of people there, and I think it's possibly because people didn't know how they would be able to give public comment, that they would be giving their, you know, their, their dreams and their wishes for the community through public comment. The other thing I want to talk about is your, the last goal in your list, which is to improve communication to the community. I think it's far more important to improve communication between the city, government, and the citizens. It's a two-way communication, and it's really important. And, and that kind of leads to the next thing I want to say is that the goals are very general, and you have to have general goals. But where you really want your community input is through the action steps, I believe, because that's what defines the goals. For instance, achieve economic and fiscal sustainability. Well, who could argue with that? But it really isn't just the fiscal sustainability of the city, it's also for the residents and the people who live here. So something like affordable housing, I think, would come under there. I think it would be good for you to think about other ways to hear from the community at that level of those action steps. And it can't just be now because it, it has to be after the goals are, are set. You do have your boards and your community boards, but I think that's not enough. And so I think that's where the creative thinking needs to come. How, how do we say how we would like you to improve infrastructure and public spaces? Just, I mean, that, that's going to take some creative thinking. And I think there are people out here in the community who would be willing to engage in that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate it. Public comment is open. And I know you're comfortable stating your name, so.
Really? What does that mean? Happy Friday, council, mayor, city staff, Erica Crawford, Morro Bay Chamber. I didn't write anything. I, I've sent each of you a, you know, three-page document.
Thank you.
Absolutely. But I just, I did want to reiterate some of the things that we've heard so far in public comment and how important it is to continue Goal One and to sort of remind us all what this term sustainability is. You know, it's defined as the ability to be maintained at a certain rate or level. That's going to take investment. You know, it's, it's not a one-shot deal. We have to continue to invest. So I am a big fan of Don Maruska's idea of, of sort of setting up some sort of an opportunity fund to, you know, foster a partnership between the business community and the city, both moving forward. And that sense of urgency that Mr. Manchak addressed, you know, I was pulling some of the sales tax reporting data from adopted budgets over the past few years and saw that sales tax has been just about $1.9 million each year for the last three years. So there is a bit of, about, you know, 1.9, 1.90. Not being very clear, sorry, Friday afternoon. But what I'm trying to say is that it, it shows sort of a stagnant, a stagnancy, a stagnant kind of a thing, which means there is a sense of urgency. We don't know when the next economic downturn could come, so there really is no time to wait. I, I would like to see, you know, continued energy around the 4MB project and some of the, the headway that we've made. I think that the regular outreach, the regular meetings and the regular trainings are catching on. Just at our last workshop on Wednesday through 4MB, we had over 30 people there, business owners, learning how to do bookkeeping, you know, and that's, seems so small, but what, you know, what a need, clearly. And then the next meeting that we're having next Wednesday is about accessing capital. So first you get yourself ready, and then you're ready to go out and, and start to invest in your business and access capital to grow your business. The deliverable for year one of this pilot program was, or program was wayfinding. So, and I think we're really close. Fingers crossed, five months, you know, four weeks and, or four, four months and three weeks now. But, you know, could we decide on what our year two deliverable would be, you know, and get it done? Because we've now got this framework that we can expand on. Do, you know, one of the notes that we included in our letter was to address this sort of a, a process and, you know, so if we have somebody who wants to invest in Morro Bay, who's the, who's the guy? Who's the woman? Who, who do we take them to, to really champion their project and get it done? I, I think that there's some room for improvement there and, and collaboration and partnership. It's something that I, I think I would, would, would assist me to get my job done too, you know, and Mike also recruiting people to want to invest in Morro Bay. How do we get those projects done? And then improving communication, you know, it's something that I brought up at the last council meeting for our update around the VC, but the visitor center, you know, how can we use that entity as sort of an outbound communication tool to businesses? So we're, we're tying sort of what's going on with recreation and permits that are coming through and events that are coming to town and notifying our businesses about these events personally. And I know, Jen, you do a lot of that, your, your staff, but you know, your small staff too. And we've got visitor center staff who could get out and be in street teams and, and assist with that because then they'll know why the streets closed down the street, you know, or they'll know maybe that they want to get involved as a sponsor, get their, you know, cross-promote their brand with an event that's coming to town. So I think that's also kind of giving them an edge on investment. So I'm just going to ramble now, so I'm going to stop. Although affordable and workforce housing is super important, it is also a really big project and can absolutely start to strain resources. So, you know, as we think about this incremental growth and the sense of urgency, I think it's important to address affordable and workforce housing. If we can do both at the same time, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate it. And thank you for your written comments as well. Public comment is open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward and provide input? Feel comfortable stating your name, please do so. If not, not a problem.
Tim Cowan, resident and business owner.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council and everyone else. And I wanted to say thank you for the input from all of you that attended the last forum, public forum, the squeaky wheel and it's, it's events like that that I think are really helping to, to bring the community together and inform the community. And, and I appreciate the, the goals that, that we are, that I've seen as, as a lifetime resident of Morro Bay, I'm, I've seen more goal-oriented council, city, and, and just processes than I've ever seen before. It's kind of an exciting time. But I, I'd have to say, I, I want to just say how much I agree with what Don was saying, Mike, Erica, is that I feel that the, you know, the theme that I'm hearing is that it's really about the business community and a strong, if we develop and continue to develop and pour into a strong business community, that really is the lifeblood of any strong community, is our business community. And so I just, I just wanted to, to say how much I, I agree with that and that, you know, we're, we're pushing in the right direction with, with, forward with small items like lighting downtown and, and, and the wayfinding project, wayfinding signs. But I think, like someone had, else had mentioned, that in this, in our plan here, where it says achieve economic and fiscal sustainability, what does that really mean? And those goals, we have goals laid out, but I feel like those goals need to be defined better, defined in a, in a way that, and really, how are we lifting up and benefiting our business community and pouring into that business community? And I think an opportunity fund, like Don was saying, is a, is a fabulous idea, you know, a great conversation. But I'd also feel that the time for conversation, how much time do we have? In the past, I feel like we've, we've looked for something or someone to sort of, to sort of save our community for a long time, and there's been a lot of conversation. And I, I believe, like Erica was just saying, and Mike mentioned also, how long do we have before there is a downturn where, where we're not just flat, but there's a downturn and, and our resources will, will be forced to go in other directions, not just in, in positive directions to grow our, our community? So I, I kind of see it's a really important time to invest and continue to invest in our, in our business community, which ultimately leads to a healthy community. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that. Public comment is open. Members of the public wanting to come forward? Feel comfortable stating your name, if not, not a problem.
I'm not comfortable, but I'll state my name.
Don't have to.
I'm Sandy Rowe.
Welcome, Sandy.
Resident of Morro Bay. Been here many years, also fellow Realtor with Tim. I came to listen, expecting, expecting a lot more people here and just to take notes, but I would like to say something, my hope and dream, thank you for those words. We need more senior housing in Morro Bay, affordable senior housing. The complex at 55 Main Street will be four years old in November. It has 20-some units. They've had only a couple of changeovers. I understand from the earlier plans, the plan for the city wanted to have commercial down below and this and that and the other, and what turned out is not the commercial, but just two-bedroom units and single-bedroom units, and it's been very, very successful. I think we need more projects like that, and I think that sometimes the zoning gets in the way when they want commercial and they want this, and this doesn't quite fit. And I think it's time to tweak things to let things actually fit and work. Also, the farmer's market, I was doing floor duty at Haven Realty on the last Saturday, and I had people coming from out of town, a young family, fellow stuck his head in, and he says, where's the farmer's market? And I said, well, are you from here? He says, no, but we heard about it, and I don't know where they heard about it. Was it on a tourism site or something that we have a farmer's market? And anyway, there was a lot of people milling around and no farmer's market. I think that should be revisited. Also, the recycling, we used to have some recycling at Spencer's Market. That's not there anymore. On the news last night, very, a lot of recycling areas have been shut down. I know we pay an extra five cents for every silly container that we buy, and we just chuck it, no place to put it. I think we need to have that back in Morro Bay. A hope and a dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Public comment is open. Public comment is open to staff? Just kidding. Anybody else? I don't want to shut it down too quickly, so, okay, seeing nobody moving forward, I'm going to close public comment. And Garrett, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
And I'm actually going to transition it over to Scott.
And I'm actually going to transition it over to Scott to fill in some of the blanks with what we've heard from this community up until this point via the Polco online engagement.
Thank you, Garrett. And thank you, community members, for coming out today. I know it's a bit awkward on a Friday at 4:00 p.m. and with rain, so I think it's double or triple what we had last year, which is, which is a good sign. Basically, I wanted to give a quick overview of the input that was provided via Polco and emails to council. The report goes in far more detail than I'm going to, but some of the questions that were asked was, you know, tell us of the existing goals, which ones are still important to you? Community members could select more than one, so they weren't forced to choose one over the other. And then there was an open-ended question, you know, asking participants, what's the most important thing for the city to work on for the next two years? So we tried to get a couple different ways for folks to respond. As it relates to the existing goals, overwhelmingly, people were supportive of continuing work on the Wharf project and continuing work on the financial, economic sustainability and infrastructure. I mean, the others did get support as well, but those are the ones who came out more on top. And then as it relates to the open-ended question about, you know, beyond those, what is the most important thing really for the city to work on? Affordable housing outside of the existing goals was, was number one. Not far behind that was short-term vacation rentals, and then kind of a nod to the quality of life that exists in Morro Bay. I think we all know what that is. Probably hard to define, but we all know what it is, and we see it. And it's, despite all the things we're working towards, we don't want to lose sight, and we don't want to lose that quality. Environment, arts and culture, bike safety, a sports complex, high-speed internet, partnerships, Surf Street Stairs, and Farmer's Market. There were a few other smaller ones that were identified. But that just gives you kind of an overview of what, what came through the Polco, the emails, as well as engagement with the advisory bodies. So happy to answer any questions before we move into council deliberation.
And just for the public's information, that polling will continue to be available? And maybe you could come in on that?
Yes, absolutely.
That we're not closing that down?
That's right. Polco is a, we're in a contract with them for this year, unlimited number of surveys. So we're going to leave the existing questions out there. People can access that by going to polco.us/morobay. And if they have not used the service, click Sign, Sign Up. Very easy process to sign up. The reason why there's a Sign Up is so that folks can be pinged when there's a new, or emailed when there's a new, a new survey available. And also make sure that people aren't voting more than once. So it's worked out for a lot of communities that are dealing with projects or trying to get an assessment on strategic planning and other venues. So we're kind of testing it out this year, and have had a really good response. Last year, we had eight people come to the community forum on goals. This year, we have obviously more folks, and we had about 100 individuals either use the online survey or email. So I think we have a much broader representation for, for council as they make their deliberations. So depending on the direction we get from council tonight, we would probably put out a new poll that's more refined based on what we heard tonight, new themes that might emerge, and ask folks to kind of prioritize those so that you have more input as you get into, moving into creating your work plan for the next two years.
And, and just because of one of the public comments, how have we advertised that to the community, the availability of that?
Yeah, I think that-
How will we?
I think the advertisement's been out there. I think that the question that was brought up by a member of the community is just, maybe we didn't advertise it as well as we could have, and, or maybe use the right words, or just give people an idea of what to expect in the community forum. And that's, that's good feedback for the next, next time that we do this. But we put it on Facebook. I think it's been pushed out Nextdoor, on our website. The new newspaper ran it in their first issue, which was really nice of them. And so I think we've hit as many places as we can. And encourage folks who email us routinely, ask council members to send it out to folks that they know, and hit it, hit up the high school and the elementary school so parents hear about it. So I think that's why we've gotten the response that we have.
Thank you.
So council, now it is an opportunity to bring it back to you to share with us what you've heard from your constituents, or what ideas that you have about your hopes and dreams for this community. And again, as, as a city manager just referenced, staff is listening. We'll refine the list of goals and objectives, put that back out on Polco if that's the direction that you provide, so that our community has yet again one opportunity to share with us the priorities that they have moving forward into the next two-year operating cycle. So it's back to Mayor and Council.
Back to us, huh? Okay. Well, thank you for that, and thank you for the summary. Thank you for your input as well. With that, I will just open it up for general comments, maybe consider inputs that you have received, council members via email or conversations at the events that we've spoken of. Obviously, you've had a chance to review all of the information that is in the staff report and the Polco report as well, and then the existing goals that we have established for the city. Again, more or less, I'm looking for big buckets. And if you have smaller ones, that's okay, too. And this is just open conversation. So anybody want to start? Great. Councilmember Heller. Thank you.
First of all, I've got to confess, I voted more than once on Polco. And I hope that doesn't really lead to my recall, but, you know, it's fun, so what can I say? You know, I want to thank you all for coming. Obviously, Friday afternoon is not the best time for getting community input, but you came out here anyway, and I really appreciate that. And I know many of you go to many meetings, and several of you said, "Boys, it's another meeting I have to go to." I said, "Well, we're setting the goals for the city, so if you care about what happens here, please do come." And you have, and I really appreciate that. The theme that I find most interesting that several of you mentioned is the sense of urgency, that now is the time. The opportunity in front of us right now, I think, is remarkable. I think the city has accomplished an amazing number of things, large and small, over the last four years. And we really have a team and a community in place to expand and grow upon that. And I believe that now is the time. Couple of you asked, what's fiscal sustainability mean? To me, it means educating the public to our true financial condition, which, as most of us know, means we are very short on money. We need additional revenue. Not just additional TOT revenue to try and keep ahead of any recession that might come, but enough money to pave our streets properly. So when you drive into town, you think, yeah, this is a major tourist town. Enough money to fix the harbor, so that when you go down to the bay, you see docks that are repaired and boats that are in good condition, you think, yeah, this is a great place I want to come back to. To me, we need to start looking at tax revenues, different forms. Let's get ahead of the game. Let's not wait for something to collapse or slide before we respond. I think all the components are in place right now. So that's my perspective, and I kind of felt the theme going through a lot of what you folks said, and I agree with it 100%. One thing that didn't get mentioned that I'm concerned about, and I know some of the others on council are concerned about as well as climate change. I think it's an important theme to be woven into everything that we do now. I consider it urgent. And I think that, in general, this community probably, for the most part, believes it's urgent as well. So I just want to put that out there as an important goal in my mind. I'd like to de-emphasize the Wharf. We spent so much time talking about it over the last five years. There are a lot of things we don't get done because we spend so much time on that. So I'm not saying it's not important, but let's mix it up, shift it up. The real important thing for us to deal with, I think, that's a right-now issue, is fiscal sustainability. And let's start, start educating the community to our true financial condition and what we can do about it proactively now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm just going to leave it wide open. I won't go in any order. Whoever-
Sure.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I want to say first that I absolutely agree about de-emphasizing the Wharf, because we're on the road. We have overcome the major hurdles, and the rest of it, to me, is just filling in the squares. So I would like to put that under public infrastructure and de-emphasize it as a major goal. And, and the fiscal sustainability, you know, I really appreciate my, Don coming here, and Mike, and Tim, and Ken, and Erica standing up for this. To me, that tells me how important it is, not only to our community, but to the larger community in the county. I know that we're short of money, and we are being hit from all sides for more money, for pensions and unforeseen things. But priming the pump is important. The seed money that Don is talking about, and sharing the load, public and private, working together for the whole community, because we are the community. A critical part of that, to me, is the ombudsman. As Erica said, who do you go to? If somebody walks into this city with a million dollars and says, "I'd like to invest in Morro Bay", who do I talk to? Well, I don't know. You can talk to Scott, you can talk to Erica, you can talk to the other Scott. But those are just pieces. We need a single person. And I guess I'm going to advocate hiring a new FTE who is the economic driver for the city. That would be in addition to the $400,000, if that's the amount. So I'm advocating putting up a bunch of front money, and I'm challenging Scott to figure out where that's going to come from. And there are a lot of other things. One of our, and we're hearing that this tonight, is about affordable housing. And I don't know what affordable housing is. It's what, what you can afford for, what somebody can afford to put a down payment and make the monthly payments. And that varies for everybody. But I would like to hone down on that. I see every day notices. My landlord has told me that they're selling the house. I need to find a new rental, or I have to move out of Morro Bay. Delmar, the number of children at Delmar is declining. I think a major goal for our city is to help young families to live in Morro Bay. And that has, that revolves around housing and jobs, and, and jobs. That goes back to economic development. Along with that is our harbor. We developed a one-water plan that, for the next 20 years and beyond, is going to provide funding for identified infrastructure needs. We did a survey of what we need, how much money it costs. We found a way to fund it through the Water and Sewer Fund, the Enterprise Fund. Let's do the same thing for the harbor. Let's figure out what we need to do to bring our infrastructure up to current standards and then sustain it. Again, fiscal sustainability. High-speed internet service. We have an opportunity right now for not a lot of money, probably $350,000, can bring us high-speed fiber optic connectivity to every home in Morro Bay, as well as public Wi-Fi hotspots. That's a tremendous selling point for economic development. Our infrastructure needs are immense. I think we need a new Veterans Memorial Building. We need a new police building, Surf Street Stairs, History Museum, Visitor Center. I would not be opposed to listing these infrastructure needs and putting a ballot measure out to our citizens and say, "Are you willing to put up a one-cent sales tax that will rebuild our city and bring, give us a police station and a new meeting place?" Oh, baba. Vacation rentals, we hear a lot about that. That's in the works. It's late summer of this year, which is not soon enough for a lot of people, but that's what it is. Disaster planning. What do we do if there's an earthquake? Well, Chief Knuckles has developed a plan for dealing with natural disasters. We need to spend some time practicing that plan, doing some mock drills, figuring out what are we going to do if, if there is a tsunami, if there is an earthquake, flooding, major flooding. And I would like for staff to explore ways to shorten council meetings. So those are my major things for right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis.
Okay, I'll go next.
All right, Councilmember McPherson, thank you.
All right, yeah. Well, I agree with much of what my fellow council members have said. First of all, I do believe that it is time that we de-emphasize the Wharf. We've made so much progress. The community has spoken now six separate times to say we're on the right track, and we just need to move forward and finish it. And I agree, it could be placed under the category of improved, proving our infrastructure instead of keeping it as a dominant goal. I also appreciate the community coming out, and I, I think we are really making progress on engaging the community, and we need to keep doing that. One suggestion I would have there is that we need to work more closely with our volunteer organizations. One of the pieces of communication that we received was from the Historical Society, suggesting that they're working on a historical preservation ordinance, and they have in progress a hidden histories panel project. They want to improve our city parks. Morro Bay in Bloom has so many projects that they want to do, and we need to really catalog and work with and make sure we support all of those organizations. Morro Bay Beautiful, we have so many, the Senior Citizens Organization, clubs and organizations that are out there, and we need to collaborate better, I believe, with our, our groups there. I do think we need to work on improving low, low-cost housing. But I think that we need to take probably a regional approach with that. I know there's going to be some money coming available for that, but I think we need to work with our county and with our partnering, our fellow cities to see where is the best place to put it, how can we accomplish it together? Because I don't know that Morro Bay by itself can tackle that issue and, and make significant progress on it. We all know, I think, that achieving financial sustainability is our number-one goal. It has been, even though you said they weren't in any particular order. That is goal number one, and we've really emphasized that. And we do need to continue making that a priority. And I appreciated the comments of Don Maruska and Erica Crawford. I think all good ideas that we need to evaluate and really come up with a clear action plan, so we can integrate all of the various strategic plans we've ordered in the past and our initiatives that are working in this regard, going back to the LEAP program, and really come up with a clear action plan for the next year of how we're going to address these issues. I like some of your ideas, Red. I think we should certainly consider them, but let's make some decisions on them to move forward. I also think we need to really take advantage of any external funding sources that are available. And just to answer Meredith Bates' question about the HEAP funds, we are applying for, or at least we're at our next council meeting, I, we will bring forward a proposal for a grant to actually institute a temporary warming shelter in Morro Bay. So, but we have to be aggressive about looking for those funding sources and making sure that we take advantage of them, because I think we need all the money and all the help we can get. So, and I would agree, shorter council meetings would be a good idea.
There's the theme. Thank you. Councilmember Addis.
You could have a couple. You could have a couple. Well, I would like to see a shift from financial sustainability to financial prosperity. And I, along with that, I would like our financial policies to guarantee that we can invest in businesses that are combating climate change and divest from those that are adding to climate change, especially businesses that invest in carbon-based fuels. I think part of that is, I'd love to see the aquarium move forward, bring high-speed internet. I love the idea of an opportunity fund to work with local businesses. I've also thought about if Morro Bay could get an endowment similar to what Cuesta and the local school district is getting, that could help us fund some of these projects that are particularly challenging, like the stairs. I'd like to see the move, the wind farm move forward. But I'd also like to see us in all of the building that we do, be thinking about our policies around local hire and how can we encourage local hire, especially when we do larger projects such as the Wharf or whatever else might be coming down the pipeline. I would like us to pick up parts of the tourism strategic plan and continue to think about how we connect Main Street and the Embarcadero and bring those business districts together. I love the 4MB plan, I'm very supportive of that. I would like to have some emphasis on North Morro Bay. I think we've languished for a while up there and there's always often on talk around North Morro, so I'd love to get some vibrancy up there and I appreciate some of the businesses up there. In terms of the Wharf, I'm in support of de-emphasizing the Wharf, but not the One Water Plan. I think the One Water Plan is critical to our thinking around sustainability, around climate change and just around our environment in general. And then in terms of improved infrastructure, I'd like to see focus on, well, under that piece of infrastructure and public spaces, that we're thinking about our children when we think about our public spaces and having more for kids to do. I asked my son today, like, "What do you think Morro Bay should work on?" And he was like, "There's not that much to do if you're 12." So I would really like our public spaces to take that into account. I know the crossing at Highway 1 in San Jacinto is not a Morro Bay crossing, but I still wish that our city would take more action and advocate more to make that a safer crossing for all of the students and children that, that cross there. And then, of course, the Surf Street Stairs. And continuing to work on biking. I know that many employees, I think Erica told me at one point, like 60% of our employees commute into Morro Bay and then there's 80, 90? 83% of employees commute into Morro Bay. No, a bunch, let's call it a bunch. A bunch of people commute in and a bunch of people commute out and that's not helping us with climate change. So, and it's, I would like people to be able to work and live in the same place, but to Jeff's point around thinking about climate change, to me, reducing commuting is one of the ways that we could attack that. And of course, that ties in with more high-paying jobs and more housing and having on-ramps for young families to get into housing. I don't think the answer in Morro Bay is to build a bunch of apartment buildings. I think that we need to be thinking creatively about how can young families have some kind of an on-ramp into, into homeownership because that is a pathway out of poverty and it's a pathway to prosperity that many young families are losing now. So, thinking about whether it's regionally, as my colleague McPherson said, or, you know, something we can do in Morro Bay. And then in terms of improved communication to the community, I agree with Ms. Brinkman who gave public comment that it shouldn't just be communication to the community, but how can we more formalize communication with the community? Part of that to me is having something with our safety forces, where there's some kind of citizens input group or a task force that could come together to talk about challenging issues within the city. I've sat on a couple of those kinds of task forces and found them extremely helpful and they tend to get to issues before they really become issues. And then one thing that to me goes along with communication is really understanding the breadth of people in our community. And I'm not sure that we've done enough training for various departments around transgender people, around working with people of color, around exploring, you know, different systems of oppression, so to speak, that might bring other voices into the fray that we're not hearing yet. And so I'd like to see that as something that we could work on. So this is my hopes and dreams list, obviously. And then, let's see. Lastly, I'm in absolute agreement with shorter council meetings, which probably won't be possible if my whole list comes forward. And then in the area of staff, I actually think we need to bring more staff under the city manager. I think what I've seen over the past two months that I've been on council is that the workload is much too great for what we're trying to get done. I appreciate the idea that Morro Bay has a lot of aspirations, but along with financial prosperity, I think we need to consider adding more staff into the, under the city manager and to help our finance department. And I think that's it for now.
That was a long dream. That's, that's a great list. Hopes and dreams, I like you, that's how you categorized it. I, I thought that was great, thank you. I tried to capture everything that you, I'm sorry, wasn't in the mic, was it? That you all said and I'll try not to repeat a lot of it, but echo support for a significant amount of it, including shorter council meetings, which I certainly will try to make happen. We, as a community, have always done for a while what we've done and we will continue to get what we've all, what we've always done and that's the issue. And I can't remember if it was Tim or, or somebody talked about a need or possibly Mike for fairly radical change with regard to this community and on a go-forward basis, looking at change initiatives. And I link that to communication with the community and, and last year I was the one that brought up this as a fifth goal, communication. And Ms. Brinkman, thank you for mentioning, it's two-way. It's really two-way and, and I know there are better avenues out there to get public input rather than this formal mechanism that we have here. And I think, Tim, you mentioned the, the chamber event where we had the informal opportunity to have conversation and I had four or five great conversations, one-on-one with individuals that were comfortable with giving input. But I, I agree, I heard it as a theme, that, that hearing the voice. I remember knocking on the doors of folks during the election and finding a whole group of people that I, I didn't even know were here that had very different opinions about things, who were uninformed about what we do routinely. And it was, it was great to get that input, so some way to bring that forward would be helpful. Some of the themes I got from you out there, I, I kind of tried to capture those. I did capture the reinvestment into the community and it's difficult in a financially-challenged community to do that. And, and I'll speak first to what my colleagues, I think, described as a need for a rather dramatic incremental increase in revenues for the city. Because in order to achieve a fair number, maybe 75% of the things that have been mentioned, business as usual, sales tax revenues remaining flat, TOT rising at maybe 5% or 6%, is not enough to sustain what is, nor is it enough to build upon that which we want to build upon. And so incrementally, I believe that we've got to, to ramp up our revenues. We do, I think, a tremendous job at controlling costs and looking at expenditures and we always should continue to do that. But, but my sense is economically we suffer from a revenue issue, whether that's a, a tax measure, sales tax measure, which I support, or a TOT increase, which I support, that would be contributed to the general fund to enable us to do the investment that many of you talked about in businesses. We have, have talked about improving, and, and this is just a generic statement, not pointing at any business, improving the quality of product that we offer in Morro Bay. And I heard public-private partnership, I heard city investment in growing businesses and assisting to grow businesses, not, I didn't hear enabling and/or being codependent to that growth. I also heard skill set development and, and leveraging resources that would assist in, in developing skills for our businesses so they can grow. And I'll use a model that I think is, is tremendously effective. It's called the WIFIya program with which, you know, we're one of 12 communities in the country that are, are getting a WIFIya loan that will offer us about 3% money for our WRF project for half of the project. That's $60 million at 3% versus bond at about 6%. The federal government does that with an investment of $25 million. And it's very interesting to see how they capitalize on that growth. Every dollar that's allocated to the WIFIya program, and I have the statistics here, returns $65 in loans to communities, which leverages $130 for that $1 investment. It's a tremendous model that I think we need to look at as more revenues become forward, come forward. I also think that something that wasn't mentioned is we need to look at our catalyst site development. We've got a number of opportunity sites like the power plant, that is a goal. That needs to, that initiative needs to move forward. That could just continue to be there for another 15 years if you looked at the contract and, and we benefit literally to no significant degree without considering some kind of redevelopment for that. So, so developing the catalyst sites that we've developed on our, our plan, our new, new general plan, local coastal plan, I think would be important. I also believe that we need to significantly invest in historical resources, in the preservation of things. And I'm, you know, it's coming forward with all the public comment on the Surf Street Stairs. I think, I'm not pointing fingers at any staff member, but I think we could have done that differently in terms of how we looked at that. And we have a number of significant historical resources in this community and there are a group of people that really want to help preserve that and, and I would like to be involved in that and see that happen with regard to our community. Housing's an issue. I don't know how to influence the price or the cost of homes on the coast of California, central coast of California. It's difficult, but I do agree, it's a regional issue. And perhaps one of the most important things might be a regional transportation initiative. When you talk about 80% of our folks traveling in to come to work here, there's very limited rural transit available to them to get here. And if they're driving their car, not only are they contributing to the negative carbon footprint, unless they all own electrical vehicles, which they don't probably, but it's very expensive to do that. And so I think a regional transportation plan that helps leverage the resources there that are available through the county and possibly funding programs would help. Couple of other notes that I made here, let's see. Shorter council meetings, I already talked about that, that's going to happen. Red, Councilmember Davis, talked about a number of replacement capital projects for the city. So I wrote down while, while we were starting the meeting, we have a One Water Plan, which is a great model for replacing the infrastructure for water and sewer. I'm not talking about the WRF project, I'm talking about fixing the storm drain pipes and, and everything else that's been broken for 50 years here. That's a great model for identifying a capital projects list, which really has not been done in the community, to determine what the needs are going to be. New Veterans Hall, new police station, new city hall, you name it, on down the line. We don't really have an idea of what the magnitude of the cost might be, nor have we had the opportunity to look at that and really try to prioritize that. So we need a capital inventory of major capital improvement projects that needs, will need to occur in this community and then we'll have to attack the issue of how to finance those in the future. I liked the comments about, where is it? De-emphasizing the Wharf. We spend too much time talking about it now. It's a project that's on the way and it's moving and I absolutely agree with my colleagues that there will be opportunities for public comment, but, but we need to just kind of tone it down now and concentrate on a number of other things that are extremely important to the community. Homelessness and housing costs in general are tough. The homeless, the homeless issue, I also believe is a regional initiative that does impact this community and, and can be leveraged with some assistance, I, I think from the county, but I do think we need to continue to look at that. Our, our, our plans that I referred to, there's a One Water Plan that exists, there's an Economic Development Plan that we have, there is a General Plan, Local Coastal Plan that's about to be approved, there's a 10-year financial plan that we have to, to look at our 10-year forecast, there is a new tourism destination marketing plan, there's a fiscal emergency plan, there is a pavement management plan, there is a disaster management plan, and I could go on. There are a number of plans that we have that have provided this council with significant information to move these things forward. And so besides further capital planning, I don't think we need to spend significant dollars on consultants for plans in the future. And I would just throw that out as, as a comment. See if I missed any of the things that you said out there. Arts, I think it was Meredith that talked about that, the number of murals in the community, investing in arts and using that as an attraction for tourists and tourism to the community. I think we need to elevate that and look at the opportunities that we might be able to invest in to make that happen. I do agree with Sandy's comments, senior housing, it's an issue. We, if you look at us, if you get to a certain age and you have to go into an assisted living facility, there aren't a lot of places to go in Morro Bay. You have to leave the community. If you get to an age where you're looking for a place to go that's more affordable, that might be a multi-unit complex where there's socialization, the possibility to have community meals, et cetera, we just don't have a lot of that. And so I, I do concur that that is important. With that, I probably repeated a lot of things, but I do agree and a great conversation. And now it's up to staff to figure out what we said and make it happen.
Can I add one more comment?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. Just want to make sure that as we move into the next phase, which really gets down to the objectives, the specific objectives, that we think about it in terms of the specific actions required to accomplish that objective, because it seems like we need to take the plan down to the level so we have a better sense of who's going to accomplish it, when is it going to be done, how much is it going to cost, where's the funding going to come from, and how are we going to measure if we've achieved it? I would just like to see us really drill down to be more specific when we take the next iteration of this, so that, I just wanted to add that, I forgot to mention that.
And we have to, we, we've talked about a lot of things, obviously, we have to prioritize those. The other thing is that I think Councilmember Addis said, there's a need to possibly increase staff. Now that's concerning when you look at city finances and the ability to fund that. However, I can tell you, going on my fifth year in council and working very closely with a large number of staff, literally every department is, is working at max capacity and, you know, I'd almost consider to be somewhat understaffed. And, and, you know, I try to, as, as often as possible, acknowledge the work that our staff does with very little resources. So when we begin to talk about unveiling these plans, remember the implementers of the plan have scarce resources. And I, I really think we need to think- And I really think we need to think about that when we make decisions. It's easy blindly to throw out an initiative to staff and not think about the impact on staff in terms of other priorities that they have, as well as the total resource capacity that they have. So thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate that, Councilmember Addis. With that, I'll turn it back to our facilitator. Garrett, thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to Scott in just one second, but I just wanted to share with you, there was some good comment on public engagement, and I'll share with you a somewhat removed observation, just to help you understand what a fly on the wall would say about public engagement in this community, and that is, if I thought of public engagement in this community as a stock that I might invest my money in, what I've seen over the last year in this community tells me that this would be a high-performing stock. The degree of public engagement, the amount of information and the opportunities for the community to weigh in on the objectives, the tasks and the goals of this community are at an incredibly high level, and the trajectory with which the path you're on is absolutely fantastic. So again, I commend you on that. From where we were just over a year ago to where you are today is really a miraculous degree of growth in public engagement. So again, the community, staff, and council, I would tell you, you should be very, very proud of the path that you're on in public engagement. And I'll turn it over to Scott.
And thank you for that comment, I appreciate it. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and community members for putting out the hopes and dreams, and now it's my turn to quash all of them. Just kidding.
That'll end this meeting?
Yes. Absolutely not, that's not what I'm going to do. What we're going to do is, staff, is to take the input that we got tonight, and from all the other channels, and try to systematically come up with a way to put them together in a package that's comprehensible to community members. And if we don't believe we can do that, we may come back to council first, but I think we can figure this out. There's a lot of thematic issues here, and definitely hear loud and clear that there's a lot that we need to move on, and also trying to figure out how to make it work with our resources and how to keep the community engaged in those processes. I think there's a way to make this all work. So we'll take the next step, if council is so inclined, for us to put them into themes and test them out in the community, then bring it back, probably the last meeting in March or first meeting in April, depending on how much time it takes, and make sure that it's publicized so the members of the community can engage in the next step. And maybe we completed one meeting, it may take a couple of meetings, depending, to get us to a place where there's discrete action items that are measurable, you know which staff member's taking it on, which department's taking it on, timelines, when it'll be coming back to council, all those things, so that people know what we're doing. That's the goal.
So with that, can you remind people one more time how to access Polco? And, you know, it's still open, we still want input?
That's correct. Yeah, so it's polco.us/morobay. If you go to that site, if you haven't used the tool before, there's an opportunity to sign up, I think it's in the right-hand corner, really easy to sign up, and then you're in the system. You can fill out the surveys that exist, and when there's a new survey that's made available, you'll be emailed that, so that you can continue to participate beyond the goal-setting process.
Great, thank you. Thank you, community members, for coming out, appreciate the input. Again, tell your friends, we want to hear more. We're open at regular council meetings to take input regarding our goals and planning. This helps inform the budget for the year, and so it's the hopes and dreams that we put dollars to and then prioritize based upon that. So thanks for being here on a Friday evening. With that, I will close the meeting, and have a great evening.